You're here.
Recording in progress.
Nobody died, nobody got sick this time.
That's good.
Yeah, last time when we were away, we had the stomach bug. That was awesome. Yeah, my youngest one got it. Well, my oldest one, the day before, came home from school.
Oh, jeez.
And I was like, sweet, this is fantastic.
That's brutal. Perfect timing.
Yeah. Because we drove to the Outer Banks last time and we were in like Philadelphia or New York.
So you were sharing. It was like an incubator.
Oh, yeah.
You're on.
Awesome. Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on August 8th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. First, I would like to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we make a, do we have to make a motion to appoint Mr. Gibbons? Or yes, can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Gibbons in place of Ms. Burke?
No motion is necessary. The chair is appointed.
Okay. Thank you. Can you, somebody mute?
I'm all muted. Jim, can you mute? Can you mute?
Sorry, I thought I was.
We'll forgive you this time.
Thanks. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of the minutes from July 25th, 2023.
Motion to accept the minutes of 7:25:23 meeting as printed.
Bob made the motion, Mr. Ryan seconded it.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a NEPRA closeout manifest for the amount of $531.81.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to have Jim explain, go through those as they come up. Let the public understands, especially because some of them are big figures, what's for transparency purposes.
Sure. So it's $531.81, and I can actually take this first one because I have an idea of what's going on. These are two different closeouts for Mr. Ryan Norman and Mr. John Silva. Both were home-based businesses. If I recall, Mr. Norman was a flooring business and Mr. Silva was basically to review drawings and plans for a mechanical firm at their houses. So these were, and Jim, remind me, what's the fee? What do we accept for a NEPRA manifest balance on the application? Is it $500?
Yeah, this is the surplus from their escrow accounts.
Right. What is the amount that we start with? We require the applicant to submit, is it 500 or?
Mr. Norman started with $1,000. Mr. Ryan started with 375.
Mr. Silva.
Mr. Silva.
So this is the remaining amount, so that's going to be returned to the applicant.
Right.
Just that good.
Motion to approve.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, next is another NEPRA manifest processing fee for $6.75. It's related to just the processing fee for those two applications I was just discussing. That's our internal fee.
This is, we charge applicants $75 per check or per item that gets paid out of their escrow account to cover our cost of checks and what have you as part of the cost of holding a NEPRA account. It's $6.75. It doesn't accumulate too much over the years, but for the treasurer, in order to keep everything nice and clean, she needs an authorization from the board to put that money into the processing fee part of the NEPRA account.
Motion to approve.
Second, this is Barbara.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next is another NEPRA account manifest for incidental expenses for the amount of $12.24. It's related to postage that Jim mailed something out. I'm not sure exactly.
The $6.75, remember I said it goes into something? It's called the NEPRA incidental expense account. And this is how it gets spent. That covers a set of board packets rather than taking them out of the operating budget. It comes out of that NEPRA account.
Thank you for the explanation.
Motion to approve.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, the next two, I guess they're, these are NEPRA, but they're related to our housing grant. So we have two invoices in front of us, one for $3,000, one for $4,500. And they are directly related to the work that the Rockingham Planning Commission has been doing for the invest, or the housing grant, which we're going to discuss in a few minutes. But that is money that is coming out of an account that is being covered by a grant that the town was awarded for $40,250, $40,500?
$40,500.
$40,500. $40,000 of it is to go strictly for the updated housing section. $500 is for internal processing fees, basically to cover Jim's time and our treasurer's time, but I think it's mostly Jim's time.
It's two separate manifests because the first manifest is paying, actually, the bill that we received in July. I submitted it in a timely fashion. We got the check back. Now we need a manifest in order to pay it out. The second one for $4,500, I've submitted it to Invest New Hampshire. This way I'll have it on hand. As soon as the check comes in, I can give the treasurer the check with the signed manifest. She can immediately cut the check for me. We'll get caught up with RPC. And going forward, it will only be one manifest at a time.
Okay, and if anybody's interested, there are invoices attached to these manifests and it aligns with the scope of work that Rockingham Planning Commission provided to the town.
Yep.
A few months ago. Do you have anything to add, Jen?
Yeah, just since, if anybody's watching, it's fully reimbursed through the town, but the town has to seek the funds through the Invest New Hampshire program and then has a contract with RPC. So we bill you roughly monthly for our work, then you bill or request funds from Invest New Hampshire. So there's just a little lag in payment, which is what we expected. So appreciate Jim's attempt to be efficient.
So I'll make a motion to pay both manifests with the inclusion that the one that we have not received the check for will get paid when that check comes in.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next on the agenda is an update on the Invest New Hampshire grant. All yours.
That's me. So I'm going to share my screen and some of you have paper copies of you, of this in front of you. So one of the first public engagement steps of doing this housing work is a survey. We are also going to do a series of meetings where we will have people gather in person and potentially hybrid to hear directly from them, but our big net that we're going to cast is a survey. We have found that in other communities, people have a lot to say about housing. People have very strong opinions, one way or the other, on housing, which is great. That's actually part of the housing work is getting people to talk about housing, their housing desires, their needs, what they've experienced, because that can help lead to better decisions for communities. But publishing the survey is sort of the first step of that. And I'm going to show you the survey itself, but this is the basic flyer that I've put together. We can talk about the survey dates, but the idea is to get people to be interested in taking the survey and providing their input. If they only answer one or two questions, that's okay. The survey software collects that information. If they take the whole survey, fabulous. We'll reach back out to them. We are going to do some outreach on it to some of the previous surveys that Newton has actually experienced. You guys have a pretty good mailing list of people who have indicated that they want to receive future correspondence, but also putting the word out on the town website to honestly some of the homeowner associations in town. I'm looking at our newest member and seeing if Sergeant Woods can be one of those because I think that would be great. Basically, our goal is to reach as many people as possible. In the master plan survey that we did, we got over 400 responses. A little bit less when we talked about land use or the age-friendly community surveys, but you guys have a pretty good history of people willing to provide their input. And this is not the only time they would be able to provide input. This is going to be a, because we have ample funding to do so, we can reach back out to people a couple of different ways to try and get as much input as we can. But this kind of meets most people where they are. So the flyer is meant to be very simple. The survey dates I've listed there, that is the Thursday. It's two Thursdays before Labor Day weekend. I don't want to publish a survey the Thursday before Labor Day weekend because no one will pay attention to it. And I want to give it enough time after Labor Day so that people who have kids starting with school and all that distraction, we covered that time period as well. I'm happy to shift this fully into September, but just in the spirit of like keeping things moving, I thought an August release date kind of made sense, but it will at least need to be these full four weeks. September 15th is a Friday as well. So if those dates seem generally amenable to folks or if you have thoughts?
I'm fine with this, the way you have it. We had talked about it before. I don't know if anybody changed their mind, but I think it's a good idea to do it in this timeframe.
We will also, so whenever we launch it, about once a week, I'll also do another social media push just so it honestly refreshes to the top of the news feed and some of the official and unofficial social media accounts. It does tend to boost responses. After about a three to four week period, it starts to fall off and we're just not going to get the number of responses from the initial pushes.
If Jen sends me this as something I can shrink down, we have a couple of people at the dump that enjoy passing out paper.
This is easy enough to make into like a postcard size.
That's what I'll do. And I'll do a thing, a large one for downstairs. It'll be black and white, but like I did for the previous ones, I printed it up as an 11 by 17 and I put it on the wall with a little holder underneath it so that people could snag a thing for the QR code or QR.
QR. I can also actually bring some color poster size of the survey.
Oh, okay.
Since I'll be here two days before the August 24th date, so.
I think we can use that electronic sign too, just to remind people too, the one.
That's up to
Trish.
Big guy on the end.
Trish?
Trish.
Yeah.
The other thing that does become really useful that I will write up is basically a little announcement that if as many boards in town can announce them at their meetings, in particular, select board, other boards as well, and I know you guys will, but it just gets the word out more. Everybody's being willing to, you know, give a little bit of outreach and share with friends. It becomes much easier and you guys can get to that a little easier than I can, so.
Well, that chairman that sits on the board remembers.
All right, so any concerns about the survey? I honestly went for a splashy color, but if somebody really hates the green or something like that, I'm happy to tweak things.
Do we have town standardized colors?
Excellent. I can't even say it. Extraordinary branding.
Some communities I work in.
Some do.
They have, I know Newton's not this sophisticated yet, but standards and colors, like city of New Bedford, Massachusetts has awesome standards if anybody's looking for an example.
I do not currently have your town logo or town seal on this. I can put it on if you would like.
I can email that to you.
I like the green.
I think it looks fine. Yeah, I was just wondering.
So as far as I know, you guys don't have standard colors or branding for the town of Newton. So, all right. So this, at this point, the survey is technically live, but we haven't announced it yet. So I'm going to ask you to not share those flyers quite yet, but if this, if these are the dates we're going with, hold on to them because then you can put them on your mailbox or hand them to your neighbor. All right, now I'm going to switch to the actual survey.
Actually, if I collect them back at the end of the meeting.
You can't have mine.
I was going to say on the August 21st or 22nd, when I go to the post office, I'll drop one. You know, I can put one there. I can put one at the bank. There are a couple of places around town so that they'll be.
I need to put mine in with my laptop so that that chairperson, like I said, won't forget.
Won't forget.
Oh, okay.
Sounds good.
Big flag. Do we want to just print one and put it on a stand in this room?
Honestly, putting a poster up on the wall would be easy enough. I'm happy to print one that can go up here, downstairs, and maybe at the transfer station.
Is there a place to really put a poster at the transfer station? We'd do better with Jack Kozak just handing out, I mean, he will hand out as many slips of paper as we give him.
How about I'll coordinate with Jim on the number of posters and stuff?
If we do like a good-sized poster though, I mean, people don't even have to get out of their car. They can just hit the QR on their way by.
I'm happy to print one and mount it on a board.
Okay, and I can also give one of these to.
I'll give it a jacket.
Kevin and ask him to convert it for the television station not to run until like August 23rd.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, honestly, the image that I can use for a postcard is the same one that typically can run on cable stations.
Oh, excellent.
We have a bulletin board at the community center at Sergeant Woods, so.
I like you. I like the way you think.
And actually, last time at Sergeant Woods, I gave them a stack of paper copies. I think we got like eight or 10 back.
Yep. There was a little confusion over that, so I think we rectified it.
I will say, I do have currently on the flyer that paper copies will be available at the town hall. I've tried doing paper copies at libraries before and it just, they don't often get used. So just making them available.
You don't use libraries.
So it is a possibility to get one, but we're only going to have a limited number of paper copies.
The bank's a good spot.
For advertising, yes. Not necessarily for paper survey copies though.
Just to hang it up. Because we used to do the blood drive. We always hit the bank. They were very receptive. The two stores at the junction and up at the mobile station, or it used to be Sunoco. And what about the fishing game club? Never did, never went there.
Do the boat ramp?
If somebody's a member, that would be fantastic. Although I don't know if their membership is largely Newton folks, but.
What we can do by having paper copies here in town hall is Mary Jo sends people over to pick it up. There's a table downstairs that they can sit at to fill it out. And then what she does is they usually hand them to her. She folds it and sticks it in my mailbox. Then I scan it and, like I did for the age-friendly community ones, I scan them and send them. In this case, it'll go to Jen, not Scott.
Packer Meadow too, we could get one over there, maybe.
Usually I take them over to Ms. Gillian.
Basically, the wider net we can put out there, the better. I don't expect hundreds of responses. I mean, that would be fantastic. If we got 200 responses, I'd be pretty happy with that. I mean, if we get more, cool. But I certainly want to get more than 50. And I, I think that we will because housing is, it's a hot topic in the news. You know, people are talking about it, so.
Did we inadvertently miss a demographic group and then, are we inadvertently skewing our results by providing these and try to, we're providing them, I'm sorry to like pick on Sergeant Woods and Packers Meadows. This results we would get by purposely, and it's an easy, like, we will get responses from both of those groups.
Yep.
But we are, but skew your results though.
It is potentially skewing our results because their needs are different than like.
So yes, but we're also reaching out honestly in some places where you're going to get some younger demographics. I also have questions up towards the end of the survey, which I'll show you, that will help me be able to filter some of that. And one of the big things I end up filtering is for folks that are 55 plus, often for income as well and whether they are working full-time, retired, students. So I'm able to pick apart that a little bit. I will have to say this, this survey is a snapshot in time. You're not going to make any of your housing decisions solely based on the outcome of this survey, nor should you. It is just getting, one method of getting some feedback from folks. The strength of the surveys is not going to be the couple of items that are more statistical. It's going to be what people write. So I did a survey in one community recently where most of the responses to, does your current housing meet your foresee, your need in the foreseeable future? Most people said, yeah, yeah, it does, but we're concerned about other people being able to come into the community. Families or our kids being able to come back or grandma being able to move into the community. So what people say is going to be, tell a lot more than whether or not we skew it. We're not doing it at Parkus clearly, but, so, yes, but no, is my.
There's a mechanism to filter that.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
So if folks are willing to be patient, I'm just going to run through the questions real quick. Most of them are open-ended, so it's really just people writing their comments. But we do provide a little bit of background about why you're talking about housing, about how the planning board received the Invest New Hampshire grant, just so people understand where this is coming from. The survey takes about 15 minutes. Comments are really encouraged. Inappropriate comments get flagged. So if someone writes something like, you know, Bob is not a good guy, I will see that. And most of the time when the survey flags something, it's actually not an inappropriate comment. It's just someone says the word hate or don't like. I'll see it and I will use judgment to say that is not an inappropriate comment and then I'll just publish it. We'll probably get a couple of those. If, when, at the end of the survey, I'll look through all of the comments. If there is something that really is a personal attack, I will talk to you guys about it before I redact just that, as short of a part of any comment that I can so that we don't have any personal attacks, but everybody's voice can be heard. If someone writes, the planning board is terrible. They've been making terrible decisions. That would not be a comment I would redact. That's not a personal attack. That's just saying they don't, in theory, like what you guys are doing. So that's sort of the judgment I tend to use on that. But I will definitely, before not publishing any results, talk to you guys about that first.
Somebody can call me out. I'm totally fine.
I have thick skin. I can take it.
It's going to happen.
I think I only ever got one, in any of the surveys I've done in Newton, only one small comment that we ever had to redact. So I, I have faith in people and the software also does say, when someone uses, they phrase it, strong language, it encourages that person to reconsider how they are expressing themselves. So if it's just a string of swear words, it will say, hey, whoa, whoa, whoa. Are you sure you want to use that strong language? Do you want to reconsider? Because the comments that are in this survey will get published. And people can put in their comments anonymously. They can leave their name if they choose to, but they're allowed to be anonymous for the reason that that encourages people to be more honest. All right, we do have a comment in here that if people want to receive additional notices about future planning efforts in Newton, that they can sign up. We don't publish that contact information. If you want more information, contact Jim about the project. It's good for it to be Jim's contact and not mine, simply because then it shows that the town has control over this project as a staff member. But of course, I'm available to answer any questions about the project as well. All right, the first question is really just to getting people thinking of how many homes are in the town of Newton. And it, people can select one of these three and it will then tell you if you are correct. So how many homes do you think you have in the town of Newton?
The 2,000-something.
The top one, 19.
1946.
Is that what it is, 46?
Final answers?
Because it's 4,500 people.
Folks on Zoom?
We're wrong.
I think it's the middle one.
All right, so it is the top one. That is the 2020 census date. The middle number, the 1751, is your 2010 census number. And the 2,234 is your projected housing for 2040.
So none of us are wrong.
They are all accurate housing numbers for the town of Newton, but the current, most up to date is the 1946. I will put a caveat in that if you look at another housing statistical source, it's called American Community Surveys. It's another Census Bureau surveying tool. It is wildly inaccurate for Newton and towns like Newton, just because it's such a rural town. It is much more accurate for places like Boston. So you may out, all right, I'm going to talk fast in case we lose it.
Screen just shook.
Anybody leave their windows open?
No.
Okay, the second question is probably one of the most important that normally I would have at the end of the survey because it is a demographic-y kind of survey question, but do you live, own property or have a business in Newton? We're talking about housing. We want to know, does somebody live in Newton or do they not? It's also a way for me to filter out results if we got a lot of people that don't live in Newton, but they might have a business in Newton and their opinion about the ability for their workers to live in the community where their business is, they might have an interesting perspective on housing as well. So we still want to capture that. This is not limited to Newton residents, but it is geared towards Newton residents. So I will be able to filter all of that out. We want to know if folks are seasonal residents. We want to know if they've lived here for a long time, for just a little while. We'll get some interesting, I'm sure. I've lived in Newton my entire. We'll get some interesting, I'm sure. I've lived in Newton my entire life. Because people have different opinions about how long they've lived in a community, about what that housing need might be.
When was the last time your organization firm did a study like this? Do you do these?
You mean for Newton or in general?
In general. Like, do you do these often?
So we do the regional housing needs assessment. That's sort of the big study that is backing up a lot of this data. We're supposed to do it every 10 years. We, in theory, only get funding, I'm sorry, we're supposed to do it every five years. We actually only get funding about every seven to eight years.
Okay.
So the 2023 one is the most recent. We have never had the funding opportunity to do this level of education and outreach and data dives into our communities, so.
I was, the reason why I'm asking you a question is I was wondering if you had historic data you can just look at for trending and stuff like that.
So we will be using some historical data. Some of it's census data, some of it's state demographic data and housing and building data. So yes, we'll have historic trends. As far as getting into.
Like the shift in people's opinions over time?
Yeah, unfortunately, that I can't get into as much. We do have a little bit because Newton's done some past community outreach and previous master plan work that we can sort of bring in. But it's, it's largely not likely to show a huge shift because some of those, I'll say, statements about the need of housing in Newton probably haven't shifted that much in the past 20 to 30 years.
Sorry for the.
Yeah, that's okay. It's a good question.
With the depth of.
But going forward, we're talking about housing decisions that will be really impactful in the next 10, 20 years. So going to be able to reflect on, what did people say in 2023, will probably be really useful in 10 years.
Right.
All right. So the next question's pretty simple. Do you think your living situation in five, 10, or 20 years will meet your current need? Or will your current home meet your future needs? This is where we'll probably get a lot of people saying, oh, I might need to downsize or I'll need to add an addition because my family's growing. They might say, oh, I can't find a rental. So no, my current housing might not work for me because there are no other rentals. So we tend to get a lot of good feedback as to people's personal housing situation and how they're thinking about that in the future from this one question. The next one is, when you think of housing in Newton in the future, what concerns you? It's a very open-ended question. Some people are going to talk about it's too expensive. Some people are going to talk about, there's no opportunity for me. They're only building big houses. It's all cookie cutter and ugly. We'll get, we'll get quite a bit of feedback from that one too. This tends to be a question that triggers a lot of people. So if there's something they don't like that they've seen recently, we'll hear about it. The next question, and this is one in particular, I could use your feedback on. Please, it says, please identify the priority of the following issues in terms of highest priority in your opinion for Newton to address. So high priority, medium priority, low priority, unsure. Is economic development a priority? That's sort of one question.
Can we change economic development to like business grow, like new businesses?
We can certainly be more specific.
Like commercial development?
Yeah, or additional tax revenue or something like.
Yeah. Economic development is very broad-based. I think that would.
It is a very broad-based term. A lot of people don't understand what economic development is. So I'm, I'm happy to change it, or we can even split it if we need to. This is sort of why I needed your feedback. I mean, we can do attracting new businesses. And retaining existing businesses as sort of a, is that a priority for Newton? I don't want to get too much into the weeds as to like what types of businesses in this case that should be. We did ask that in the big general master plan survey two years ago. But I'm happy to add something that's, you know, attract or retain businesses. Does that kind of get to the?
I think attract business growth of some sort, yeah. Get to.
So the next one is natural resource preservation slash rural character. I will tell you, people have very different views about what rural character means, depending on largely where they have come from, if they are not from, in this case, Newton. It can mean a lot of different things to a lot of people, but people tend to like the term rural character as well.
I like it.
I mean, you could take it a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
Kind of the point, right?
Yes. I will say one thing, when we have sort of one of our in-person events, I tend to not ask people to define, like, when you say rural character, what do you mean? Because that, people have a hard time putting it into words. We can have a lot of photos up of like, what do you think about this kind of housing? What do you think about this kind of housing? So they react more to a picture and it would be a variety of pictures that, some will be more rural, some will be a little more urban. What do you like? What do you not like? That tends to give a better, better bang for your buck sort of feedback to folks. And it's, it's hard to do that in a survey like this, but in an in-person event, people have more time to think about it. So the next thing is going to be affordable or workforce housing. I am not defining what affordable slash workforce housing is here. It jumps down to that in a minute, but how important is that for the town to prioritize? Some people will say big priority, some will say low, a lot might say, I don't know, what can the town do? And the next part is transportation and infrastructure improvements. Having infrastructure available, and that can be roads, water, sewer, septic, lighting, fire trucks, school available can be a big motivator for housing, or it can curtail housing if you don't have them available. So how important that is can be a secondary impact on housing.
So that's inclusive of town-owned buildings?
Not, it could be. It's not explicitly called out here, but it could be.
That was, see, I, I don't read it that way.
Okay.
I read it as like railways, bus stops, transportation related. Not new library, new town hall, we don't need a new fire department.
Put a railroad next to us.
So I can put in town facilities.
I, I think that would probably, town facilities and public transportation or transportation opportunities.
Okay.
Something along.
I might then add a category of water infrastructure, just because that's another big driver of housing.
Okay. But that, that's fine. I think broadening or separate, maybe two categories or broadening it like infrastructure.
Okay.
Separate from transportation.
Easy enough? All right. The next one is really getting into agreement statements. Do you agree with these statements? That Newton provides affordable home purchase choices? Are there affordable houses and homes and condos in Newton? Newton provides housing choices that attract workers of all ages. You guys have a little more industry than a lot of your neighboring communities.
Can you put workers?
More than some, less than most.
Do you need to add yeah to workers?
Oh, you are absolutely correct. Workers, all right. The next one is you have adequate rental options. A lot of people are going to say, I don't know. Because you have a fairly high owner occupancy rates. Most of this part in New Hampshire does, where most people own their homes. There's not a lot of rentals in town. There's higher rentals in like Portsmouth and Manchester and Salem and this, and Plastow actually has a fairly high percentage of rentals. Newton provides adequate housing choices near jobs and transit access. You guys don't have a lot of transit access.
No.
But do you have housing near jobs?
Thirty minutes to get to 101.
Yeah. But that can be a reason why someone may choose to live here or not, or this might not work for them. Newton provides adequate housing options for aging seniors. This is where it's really nice to know if someone has lived in the community for a long time, so they've potentially gone through some life phases in town. We'll also have age as a question that gets asked. So we'll know if it's someone who maybe is younger saying, yeah, I agree that Newton does provide adequate housing options. Maybe they see that there's a couple of 55-plus developments, but it might not necessarily be affordable to all the seniors who may want to live there or want to stay in Newton that are already living here. So I think we'll get some interesting feedback on that one.
Is there any assisted living in Plastow?
I believe there is at least one. I think it's closer to the Atkinson border.
And there's none in Newton, correct?
No.
Okay. Or like Kensington or Kingston there is.
There's definitely, there's, uh, there's two in Kingston. And I think there's a third one under getting approval, or just got approval.
Should we put the word, um, should we put the word affordable in there? Adequate affordable housing options for aging seniors or are we just looking at?
So the reason for adequate and not affordable is they can be two different things.
Right.
And I don't want to skew this survey so much of just looking at seniors.
So we're talking about mostly inventory?
Yeah. So, you know, seniors at all different income levels
Yeah.
may need different housing than they needed when they were raising families. They might want it smaller. They might want less maintenance. They might want one floor living. They might be disabled. The affordability is part of that, but it might not be the only motivator. That's why we tend to say adequate in that sense.
Gotcha.
Sorry, lost my train of thought. So the next question that I put in, I actually need to add in the definition for it, but it, this is more of a information piece where we're trying to educate people a little bit as we're taking the survey. About in New Hampshire law, municipalities are required to allow for reasonable and realistic opportunities for the development of workforce housing. How much can a home cost to qualify as workforce housing in the Newton area?
Can we revise that language to be stronger? Something like, New Hampshire law requires municipalities to allow for reasonable and realistic opportunities? So it's, I don't know why I like that better, but it's more like a direct statement that's shorter.
Say it again?
Instead of say, in New Hampshire law, municipalities are required, something along the lines of, New Hampshire law requires municipalities to allow?
Yeah, I can search that.
I don't know if anybody else has an opinion on that, but.
What did we change?
Uh, instead of saying in New Hampshire law, just say, New Hampshire law requires municipalities.
Yeah, it's a little more active.
That's the, yes, active language versus passive?
Yeah. I have no concern for folks. Okay. This is one where I do not have the correct answer show, like, so people will just select whatever number they think is correct. At our next public engagement session, that's one of those pieces of information of, what do people who most likely don't know think that something qualifies as affordable in Newton? It's about a $400,000 purchase price is considered the affordability threshold via U.S. Housing and Urban Development for this region based on median income. Now, that does not mean that there's a lot of homes for $400,000 in Newton available, but that's what they consider the estimated maximum purchase price for the median income for the region. I'm sorry, for Newton. All right. The next question is, what do you see as the primary factor impacting housing availability? So number of houses and affordability, cost in Newton. A lot of people will probably say land values. A lot of people will probably say building costs, taxes. And then a lot of other people will have a range of what they think is going on. There's not enough inventory, interest rates.
Planning board.
Planning board, lack of infrastructure. This kind of we'll get at when we have the discussion of what can Newton as a town or the planning board do to impact housing availability? It's limited. You have some component of it. Some of what you might decide or not decide will impact housing. For better or worse, it will impact it. But you don't have a whole lot to say about property taxes and land values and mortgage rates. You don't have a lot of influence on that. So that's why we're having this conversation, so that Newton can help make decisions to steer the town in the direction they want to go based on how much influence you can have. That's the reason for this question.
Right, because as much as what we try to do and try to help with it, I mean, the big, the big factor is the, the housing market itself. I mean, just like simply in the course of a couple of years of pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, the way the market fluctuated and increased so drastically, that's, that was a big driving factor that really ultimately put a lot of houses out of the reach for affordability and for the lower income earning people.
Yep. I will say in many towns where there was a lot of construction of, in general, you know, big developments of, you know, dozens, if not hundreds of condos or apartments, where those types of projects got approvals sort of before the pandemic. In some cases, if they hadn't started building, they're coming back to the communities and asking if they can scale down their projects. Or if they proposed 25% of the units to be affordable units, they're asking if they can scale that back simply because they need to have more profits to be able to make the development even feasible. So they're asking for relief, or the projects just aren't getting built. It's something like 60% of the projects in Portsmouth that have been approved for housing in the last seven to eight years have never even been constructed. They have a backlog of hundreds of units that have been approved. They could still be built per their town approvals and state approvals. They just haven't been, and some of it is construction cost.
Their entire financial model has changed.
Yes.
So that they need to scale them down or they just can't afford to build them.
Yeah.
Good question on some of this. So all these questions are very, you know, I guess, specific to, you know, the, the actual kind of development of, you know, whether it's physical structures or the actual housing situation. But in terms of like developing growth and attracting people to the town, a lot of that depends on things like services. Whether it's, you know, education or police or water or, you know, utilities. Is there any kind of surveys that we're collecting on how people feel about those types of things as well?
So you guys did do a big master plan survey back in 2021 that did get to a lot of those specific issues. Housing is tricky. So think of like a daisy. If housing is the topic in the middle, all of the petals are all of these other things that influence it. So it's really hard to talk about housing in isolation, but if we get too far, I'm going to say into the weeds, into the petals, we're not going to get people to talk about the topic at hand.
Got it.
And that's also the reason for the open-ended questions, so that people will bring up things like, well, you know, the, if we attract more housing, we're going to have to build a bigger school. I mean, that might not be really how that plays out, but it all, or if we have to build a bigger school, well, my taxes are going to go up. So it, it's not an easy topic because there's so many moving parts.
No, I, I get it. So makes sense.
But I, I totally hear what you mean. And I'm with the chapter that we've already drafted. We've pulled in a lot of those related topics to try to be like, well, this is what people said about this aspect or this aspect, without having to ask them again on this survey, because you have had some recent. because you have had some recent broad public engagement.
Do we put any questions about a school in this or absolutely not? Okay.
Nope, it'll come out, I promise. Okay, moving on. The next question is, what should Newton's goals for housing? I'm sorry, what should Newton's goals be for housing? Because I bet you most people have no idea. Do you guys know what Newton's current housing goals are in your master plan?
Do you?
It's been a little while since I've read your, your housing master plan chapter, but they basically say maintain rural character, maintain the aesthetic.
But not, not any definitive growth goals or?
No, it doesn't say don't grow. It doesn't say don't not grow.
Okay.
It doesn't give a whole lot of direction. I'm hoping that the goals should not be explicit direction, but they should give the big idea. And then we'll have actions underneath of like, okay, maybe you want to.
2%.
Maybe you want to look at detached accessory dwellings. Maybe you want to consider expanding where duplexes are allowed. Maybe, like, maybe some of it's just procedural things. You want to make it easier for someone process-wise to get an accessory dwelling if it meets X, Y, and Z criteria, so they don't have to come to the planning board. Maybe you want to do that. Maybe you want to allow six-unit multifamily developments as long as they look like your classic New England home with a barn attached to it. Maybe that's what you want to allow. So that's why I want to ask people, what do they think the goals should be?
Do you think we would actually get a response to that level of detail?
You might get a few responses like that. I think that being able to present the findings of the survey, because we'll do a summary at the end and publish it, and people will be able to get at. We'll encourage people to come to the second phase of the public engagement where we can talk about some of the ways that the town can actually help to address some of those desires of rural, rural character or process. That will also come out as part of your land use regulatory audit. That's sort of the second phase of this project. So what can Newton actually do about the things that they might identify as housing goals?
And that will all be completed by March?
The land use regulatory audit, yeah, will be completed by around the March timeframe. We will not be able to, we might be able to identify some very small zoning changes for this year. Most of what we get feedback that then you're gonna want to work on will be for March 2025. A few of the items might be site plan and subdivision regulations that can happen any time of year.
Okay.
But I would love it if people want to give us that level specificity. That would be fantastic. They probably won't, though.
I was just gonna say, you might get that at the in-person.
Yes.
Because when we did the charrettes a long time ago, that was the type of thing that people actually said. That's what led to our creating the village district zones in town, is people were like, no, we don't want it to look like downtown Newburyport. But one of the things that you mentioned, there was a house that was specifically referenced. And, you know, people commented that they could see that house being divided into four or five apartments.
I mean, I will say the, there's a red house. I think it's a Queen Anne's house, just sort of up Main Street. It's got, looks like some dumpsters outside of it. Looks like it's being renovated right now. That's the kind of home that could potentially be turned into a two, maybe three-unit.
That's the one on the corner, right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I don't know the infrastructure of that house, but.
Oh, they are, that could easily be a two, three family.
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily really impact the visual for people. That's usually that rural character that they really like. Obviously, it would add more people to the town, potentially kids in the school. But the impact is less if you're doing redevelopment than necessarily putting up a brand-new, I'll say, modern structure right next to the historic homes. People tend to get more aggravated with that. So that's kind of some of the feedback we also want to get is the aesthetic.
Just as a quick aside, anybody, when you're going down Woodier Street into the junction and when you turn the corner, many of those homes were built as duplexes.
Oh.
Two-story. And most of them have now been converted into single-family homes.
Split entry, so one downstairs?
No, no, they were actually two separate apartments on each floor. Well, one apartment on each floor.
Oh, right by the tracks, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's that one. There are the ones that are going up Woodier Street from the church, from the church back. Anything that's two stories high was actually, including my old Grange Hall, the one next to it. Those were all built as.
I can see that, yeah.
As two apartments.
All right, moving on. The next question is talking about current housing development. You guys have had some subdivisions in the past decade. You've had a couple of bigger construction projects go through. How have people felt about it? You've got one up on North Main Street, Todd Fitzgerald's property that he's actively working on, although I think it looks like it stalled a little bit. You know, people are gonna be driving past some of those every day. How do they feel about it? Do they, do they hate it? Did they cut down all the trees and that's their thing that they're most angry about? Do they like the look of it? Has there been an accessory dwelling their neighbor put in? That they're like, oh, yeah, no, that's, that's been great. Very open-ended, also gives people a chance to vent about some things they maybe really didn't like.
Those used to be one-room cabins.
Yes, but they were, if my recollection is correct, they were in very poor condition.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
All right. So the next question is a map-based question. Half of the folks that take the survey will have a hard time filling this out. Not because it doesn't work, it does work, but because you are able to drag a pin. And the three categories are denser housing, preferred here, no more housing here, new housing might be okay here. So you take a little pin, you plop it where you want it to go. You can write a comment about why you think that is.
It works on a phone, too.
It does work on a phone. People can zoom in, they, and so as people start taking the survey, they'll start to see the pins. And this is a question we can keep building on throughout the engagement, so we can get an idea, and this can help with zoning decisions.
So when people are taking it, they'll see the pins that have already been dropped by previous people?
Yep, so I can take a denser housing preferred here.
Can I make one suggestion? So you can only drop a pin within Newton?
The boundaries are actually a little outside of Newton that you can also drop it. I just have the town outline there, so you can see it.
Can you make that like yellow or red or thicker? It's hard even for me to.
Yeah, I think it's because of what map I've actually picked on the out.
Do you have the option of dropping multiple pins of each color?
Yep, so I already did the new housing.
Oh, gotcha, all right.
So you'll see we have two blue pins. So we might get a lot of feedback from this. We might only get a little. I've had sort of mixed results, but it's a nice option. And then when we have any in-person events, we can also do it so people can have little colored sticky dots that they can put on a big map as well.
Is there anything stopping somebody from putting 500 dots on there?
There is nothing stopping someone from putting 500 dots on there, but.
You're fun.
I can, I can take the data, and if I see, oh my goodness, someone tried to, you know, just put lots of new housing right here, and I noticed that, I can see if it all came from the same respondent.
Tracking their IP.
Yeah, so I can, that's another way I can filter the data. If we say someone's trying to, I'll say, stack the survey, sway the survey. I can look for timestamps, IP addresses. I've never had, in any survey I've ever done, I've never had that happen, but I do always look for it. But yes, if someone puts 500 blue pins on the same parcel, I might question what they want to do with their property.
Yeah, so we'll be calling you up.
Sorry, I know how to make it look like you have different computers.
Until you answered Dennis's question, I expected people would take the denser housing preferred here and drop them in every town around Newton and nothing in Newton.
And it is interesting. So one of the next questions I will ask is like, show me what, please indicate if you're willing to, what neighborhood you live in. It doesn't ask for someone's address. It's more of like a quarter-mile circumference. So what neighborhood do you live in? So if they say, I live in this part of town, put all the housing over there, I can tell that. And that's an okay thing, but I, you know, if that's where everybody says, no housing in my backyard, but on the other side of the tracks, that's okay? That's, that's interesting information, though, right?
You don't do that.
Can you scroll down on the map?
Yep.
So the next map? What, wait, is there another map?
Nope, there's only one. I just grouped, zoomed in.
If you go to the bottom of the survey, there's another map?
Yeah, that's the one where you can indicate where you live.
Is that showing your, okay.
Right now, it's showing my IP address. I can set it, so it's centered in Newton.
That was my.
Yeah.
Because mine was showing Providence, probably, because I just came from Rhode Island. Sorry to jump.
No, that's okay. And people can leave an overall comment. That might not be a specific location, but if they have a comment about where they, if they want to like describe where they're okay with more housing or no housing, they can write as much commentary as they want. All right, that's sort of the end of the, the bulk of the survey. Now it just gets into demographic information. What's your employment situation? Full-time, part-time, student, unemployed, retired, other? What's your age? Really binned by sort of life stages, but we do tend to get a lot more folks that will maybe skew 55-plus. That would be one of the breakpoints where I would do some of the analysis at the end based on comments and feedback. Household income is really relevant to this topic. People certainly can, can answer that they don't want to provide it, and that's fine. If probably about 30% of the folks that I've taken, have taken the survey, I've done in a couple of towns, have indicated they don't want to give their income. That's fine. It just can help us with some of the answers if they're saying, well, you know, my income is way above the median for the area, or it's way below. That gives us some guidance with some answers. Again, what neighborhood do you live in? If someone doesn't live in Newton, indicating where their business or their property is located within that area also can give us some feedback. And then finally, people can sign up for updates regarding Newton planning efforts going forward. And also, we would use this to then send the survey response, or the survey summary once we're done with the survey and all of the results have been published.
Very good.
And also, when we finally get a survey summary, and it would end up getting posted on the town website, it remains available on this website. We can post when that is available and put it out to all of the social media accounts, town website, and email blast to boards and to anybody who gave us their email to say, hey, the survey results are available. When we do that, though, that's the time when I want to be able to set the date for the public engagement events, even if they're not until, say, October. Just like a save the date kind of a information. It just puts it out there that, hey, we're continuing this conversation.
Right.
So we don't need to set that next phase two date yet, but before we publish the results, we do need to get that date set.
Sounds good.
That's the plan.
So all this planning is excellent, but if you don't get someone that's willing to offer rentals at an affordable cost or, or build a duplex and sell them at workforce prices, we're still gonna be in the same spot we're in, unless we can incentivize that kind of development or rezone some areas and incentivize that, you know, people to build it and offer it at that.
You are absolutely correct in that. You cannot force someone to build something. So I encourage with all of this housing work you to think of not just think about the affordable workforce housing component. It's part of the discussion, and it's an important part of it, but it is not the only housing discussion that you, I think, should have. It should be broader for what your community needs. It might be very hard for Newton and many of the communities around here to ever meet your workforce housing share. It's probably not realistic for most communities. Land values in southern New Hampshire are very high. But going through the exercise of hearing back from your community, considering it, documenting it in a, in the outreach and a master plan chapter, and then maybe identifying some zoning changes that at least provide the opportunity for development is not only good planning, but it also, if someone were to challenge you and say, you are not providing your fair share of workforce housing. You have your counter case of, actually, we did provide opportunity. Just because someone didn't come and build it, well.
We tried it.
We tried. We put in the time and the investment. We listened, we documented, and then we made the rules such that it can be developed under our zoning. That's what part of this you have control over. You don't have control over making someone build housing. So I'm trying to help sort of build your legal argument as well for if someone were to challenge you when you don't get hundreds of units of affordable housing. It'd be great if you did, but I don't think that's realistic. It'd be great if you got some affordable housing or more housing diversity.
Well, and if we had a lot of it, it would become more affordable because it, you know, there would be a glut of rentals, maybe.
I mean, the, the housing needs of most communities are just different than the housing stock that they currently have. So I promise this is not for nothing. It's not, and we're not trying to get, you know, hundreds of units of low, low-income housing built in Newton. That's not the goal of this. It's to meet the housing needs of your community.
One of the, the things with the workforce housing that I wanted to ask you about, Jen, was, so it goes by based on the person's, it's supposed to be at least a two-bedroom, right?
Um, yes and no. So workforce housing, when you have a development that is going to qualify as workforce housing in New Hampshire law, at least 50% of the units have to be two-bedroom.
Right.
So some of them can be one-bedroom or studio. And there is a limit onto the age restrictions. Only 20% of the units can have an age restriction, which usually means 55-plus.
But one of the key things that I was wondering is because this is supposed to help open hous, opening housing for people to come to New Hampshire, to work in New Hampshire, do they have to sign some type of agreement that if they enter into one of these housing structures for that said cost per their income, do they have to be working in New Hampshire and not end up working in Massachusetts?
No. When you have a development, condos, apartments, rentals, if they have the stip, the income restrictions on them, what typically has to happen is that there's an annual income verification. Some towns do it, some do it through a management company. It's a stipulation on that, but as far as where you are receiving that income, that is not, I don't think that's even legal to require.
Yeah, I wasn't sure the way the state of New Hampshire was pushing the workforce housing and because of the shortage of workers for all these companies that have been coming into New Hampshire looking for help, if that was gonna be one of the stipulations towards this workforce housing.
So there are two distinctions I know. There is affordable workforce housing that does not have any income restriction on it. There's no legal restriction as to. that does not have any income restriction on it. There's no legal restriction as to the income verification component. It's just based on market rate is under that threshold of affordability. Then there's the income restricted properties. So Newton could, in theory, have, could meet its affordability, its workforce housing requirement, just based on the market. But the units that have those restrictions do have to have a, usually have a time restriction on them. Sometimes it can be 10 years, 40 years, where someone, if they own it, can't make the kind of profit that you would on a market rate unit.
Right.
Um, if it's a rental, then it has, the rental rate has to.
A part of that's what's coming from New Hampshire though. They're, they're giving them kind of a kickback though for creating.
There was money through some of the COVID relief funding that the state got that did go towards the construction of workforce housing. The stipulation on that was that it remain affordable for five years.
Right.
It was not a very long timeframe.
Yeah, not, not a long stipulation.
Yep.
All right. Sorry, we're out of time.
Jim.
I just, while listening to the, the conversation, is it possible to, probably screwing things up, put in here a question that specifically says, you know, choose from the list below what you believe workforce housing is? Because I think a lot of people that I've spoken with in the town of Newton assume that workforce housing is New Hampshire's answer to Section 8.
I don't, I don't, I would say you're probably not wrong.
Well, no, no, because workforce housing.
Right. Sounds like a, a code word.
You know, an accessory apartment under $1,800 in this, in Drackingham County constitutes as workforce housing.
Really?
It, in theory can, yeah.
Um, and houses that are.
About 400?
Yeah, 400,000. That's not Section 8 housing. Section 8 housing is not going to put you into a $1,800 a month apartment. Section 8 housing is going to put you into a $1,200 a month. Yeah. So people assume that workforce housing is only going to be attracting a certain socioeconomic class where quite honestly, a lot of people at the level they're thinking of can't afford what actually is out there as available workforce housing. I mean, Tuscan Village over in Salem, who has, seems to have built in, I mean, literally hundreds of new units.
It's more than that.
Oh, yeah. It's like 300, isn't it?
No, it's.
If you see, if you, I mean.
Much more than that.
They rent a three bedroom over there for almost $6,000 a month.
5850.
And it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Their, their workforce housing units are not that cheap. But in people's mind, when they hear workforce, it just, it would be interesting to see because that's one of the things of all the possible walls.
We could use.
That a developer would run into in the town of Newton as far as building, you know, the future development. I think it's the, the word, yeah, I want to put up workforce housing. And everybody is going to automatically assume that it's, you know, prefab slums.
So I'm happy to add that as a general question.
Why don't we put more, make it more educational and at the top, put some sort of.
Definition.
Definition on, you know, when you see this word, this is the definition that we're going by.
I, I can certainly do that. The reason for not actually, you didn't see the word workforce housing very much in this document. It said affordable.
Right.
The term workforce housing basically originated as a way to have a more neutral term. I don't think it succeeded, but for housing that is working for nurses, I'm sorry, nurses, teachers, restaurant workers. So, you know, people that have decent incomes, it's not, it's not specifically skewed for very low income. It tends to be a very triggering word. I think if we put in definitions, I can, I'm happy to add, they are definitely in the master plan chapter and will be in your regulatory audit. The reason for not doing it and not asking is because it tends to put people into like a red zone of thoughts.
Yeah, it shifts their thinking.
I do think if we ask the question, we're gonna end up having to redact a lot of statements, to, to be honest. I'm hap, I'm happy to add it.
I would leave it just for that purpose, like you're talking about, Jim, because I totally agree with what you're saying. Once that thought comes in, then that's the driving force of the way they're going to look at and interpret every question that they're looking at.
With any, with the public session that I've sort of got in my head designed out for the next phase of this, discussing what workforce housing is, the state law, what affordability means, certainly has to be part of that presentation.
Well, I mean, I, I would think that the majority of people, you know, they may read that and have some sort of negative thoughts on, you know, you're teeing them up for, you know, I don't want this in Newton. But then I think if they actually knew what it meant, the majority of this town falls in an area where that would be helpful to them.
I agree with what you're saying, that logic.
Yeah.
I unfortunately, my experience is people read like six words and then just blast.
Well, and it doesn't only apply to workforce housing. It's, it's the whole housing plan for Newton going forward. So we don't want to like create this thing in their mind and they can't think outside of that thought where they apply everything to workforce housing, the whole plan, you know?
So if we, if we do ask it, my only suggestion is put it farther down in the list of questions.
I wasn't suggesting that we should ask the definition. I, I think Jim had brought up the fact that some people might not like that phrase.
We define.
So that we simply just define what it is.
Um, as a different option, I'm happy to put like a sidebar where it says, this is what affordable housing means. This is what workforce housing means. This is what effectively market rate housing means.
I, I don't have a strong opinion on it. I was just kind of responding to.
Okay.
The initial.
So almost take the question about like, what do you think is affordable and change that?
I don't know that I would change the question, but I can have it so it has basically some more information preceding it, definitions effectively. So in New Hampshire, we talk about housing in three main categories. Market rate, so just what it costs somebody without any legal restrictions. Affordable, that means that someone with a median income is able to afford a two bedroom unit. And then workforce, meaning it has income restrictions at or below this level. And I can put like what, what the annual household income can be.
Approximately $100,000 or whatever that threshold, that would, I think would be helpful.
So does that work? So before that question about how much is something that's affordable in Newton, I'll add that verbiage.
Yeah. I mean, instead of people perceiving it a certain way, we just factually list out the information.
Okay. See, I knew you guys would have opinions on housing and housing surveys. And with that, I am done.
And with that, I believe we are done.
Any other comments?
Negative.
Can we adjourn at 8:20? Perfect.
Excellent.